Okay, um, let's see, it's six o'clock. Uh, let's call to order the city council work session for September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Um, and if we could have a roll call, please, Sue.
Uh, Councillor McBride?
Mike, I think you're muted. All right. Mike, we see you, but we don't hear you. There we go.
Thank you. Councillor Cofield?
Here.
Councillor Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Uh, Councillor Martinez Plancarte will be late. Um, she is on a plane, but she is coming. Um, Mayor Rogers?
Here.
Councillor Bacon?
Here.
Councillor Finley?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present with the exception of Councillor Martinez Plancarte.
Alrighty, great, thank you. Alright, review of the council agenda and meeting, anything for this evening, folks?
Rick, you wanted to add that proclamation?
Yep, that's right. I do want to add a proclamation on regarding the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven coming up here right away, so. Uh, we do have that, um, and we may actually, depending time, depending on time, may be able to hit the proclamations prior to the end of this meeting. So.
And I freezered everyone up.
I, I don't, I think Sue.
Just, just Rick. No, just Rick was frozen. Yeah, you're back now.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I grew up Catholic, Rick. I hold very, very still.
Let's not start hearing about your Catholic.
No, I'm just saying, there was punishment if you moved in my family. You, you stayed still in the pew. That was it. So.
All right, are you, uh, leading us on this subcommittee stuff, Sue?
I, well, I am, but, um, so are you and Denise and Stephanie, so I will invite you to speak. I'm really sorry, I forgot to put you in the PowerPoint, but the council subcommittee on committee system review, and this should be the last time you have to see, hear that phrase because they have completed their work. Um, hang on a second, I have two tiny little screens trying to use the new computer tonight, become more modern. As my old seven-year-old computer just keeps cranking, and you can literally hear the gears thrashing along. Okay, so the the first item on this, um, so this was a committee system, committee, subcommittee that was convened back in the spring. And they did some stuff with the youth, adding the youth memberships to all committees in the spring. And then we met August fifth and got our work done in one meeting, so we canceled our second meeting August twelfth. And so the, was the Mayor Rogers, Councillor Finley, and Councillor Bacon were on this subcommittee. So the first item we looked at was one that came from the way-too-long analysis I wrote way back in the spring. Um, and that was the removal of committee members for absenteeism. So, you know, when I looked at all of the committees and how they removed them, we had a pattern of inconsistency, which were consistent with our inconsistency, so there's that to be said. Um, it applied to five of the seven standing committees, but not all. Um, however, the method to remove a member seemed a bit harsh, given that one of council's goals is customer service, and that includes customer service to our valued volunteers. Um, so I polled some other cities to get some examples, and everyone said, yes, that is quite harsh. Well, thank you. But to have some other ideas, we've got some sample code language. So this code language is from the city of Roseburg. And the subcommittee, um, discussed it, liked this recommendation, but did want it to come back to the council rather than, in Roseburg's method, the removal would be, um, by the commission chair. So it's spelled out there, and there's more detail in the staff report, and it basically says any member who fails to attend at least seventy-five percent of the regular meetings in any one year will be disqualified from serving. And then it goes on to, of course, unless those are excused, and then there's a little bit about the method of how that would happen. So at this moment in time, I would invite the subcommittee to discuss why they liked this recommend, this code language, and discuss their recommendation to the full council.
All right, Stephanie or Denise, you want to lead off on this one?
I like this because I think it's a better, it's better to have the council remove people since we are the ones who actually put people on, and I think it could create uncomfortness, is that a word, on, um, on committees when, when they have relationships with each other from working together to have them. So that's, that's one of the reasons I specifically like the part where we're the ones, we're the ones dismissing people if necessary.
Yeah, I agree with Denise in that regard, and also, um, I like the seventy-five percent. Um, because we talked about how some committees meet a lot more often than other committees, so putting it to you, if you miss one meeting, or if you miss two meetings, um, it would look different for each of those different committees, so this kind of gives us a better way of, um, sort of dealing with people who are consistently absent, rather than someone who just misses one meeting in, you know, meetings that happen very regularly versus other, other ones that only meet quarterly or other things like that. So, um, I think this just helps us across the board.
Right, and I ditto all the above.
Okay, I'll go on to the next recommendation, unless there were any other comments from the council. So this is the council pension subcommittee. Um, many of you may not know, Newburgh has its own pension plan. We're also in PERS. Um, it was created many, many years ago, and despite my efforts, and believe you me, I dug through a lot of piles of old minutes and et cetera, um, I could not find any basis for the subcommittee. So I had recommended dissolution of the pension subcommittee, uh, in particular because, um, I couldn't find any documentation of why the council started having a subcommittee on pension plans, and I could not find um, my polling of other cities, uh, other examples for us to follow to give it more structure, and so, um, after some discussion, and I think Denise is probably the best person to talk about the previous practice of how they, they used to do this, because she's been on the pension subcommittee and on the council longest. If you would not mind, Denise.
Sure. Originally, uh, our, the people that handle our, our pension plan would come and give a presentation to the council, and they're, they were flying in from like all over the country, it seemed, and they'd come and they'd spend and they'd talk to us. And the whole process is very, it takes a long time to learn it, let's put it that way, and then, so the mayor who loved pension stuff, because he worked, the other mayor, Mayor Bob, worked for PERS, um, he decided we should have this pension subcommittee, so less people had to learn the details of it. It turned out that we only met once a year, so we still, the only reason I learned any details is because I was on it the whole time. Um, as soon as we got new people, it became complicated again. And so when the group, our group got together and talked about it, I think it's just as fair and just as easy if we have to talk to them, that they talk to all of us at the same time. So, that's what I thought, and that's what the group thought, and, uh, as much, you know, as I love that meeting, I was willing to give it up.
So, um, the, there is an action item before you tonight in business session to dissolve the pension subcommittee. So we can remove that unless there, if there's any objections, but that was the sole item from these analysis that didn't really require a lot of policy writing. So I thought, well, what the heck, why not just deal with it and, and put it on the agenda for tonight? Okay, so item three, citizens rate review, um, then I looked at the code and the resolutions and the policies. Um, one of the things that didn't really match up with the council goals was the name of this commission, so, um, many people purchased water from the city, use the stormwater, use the sewer, um, but not all our citizens. And so I did not feel that it met the goal of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it's a simple fix to take the name citizens out. Um, and the committee basically recommended going to rate review commission instead of citizens rate review commission. And again, the subcommittee would like to share their thoughts. That would be great.
Again, I, I think, you know, as, as Sue said, it's a, you know, an easy fix, it's just a bit more, um, it's, it's more of an accurate statement. Um, I know citizen can, can mean a resident of any place, but I think in common usage, it's, it's not so much that, so. That was, that was my thinking anyway.
Okay, this one's a wee bit more complicated. So as you can see from the table on there and in your staff report, um, membership requirements as far as residency go are all over the map. Um, this involved interesting exercises for me when I first started here, and we did not have an ArcGIS map, because I would have to take a ruler and measure on the paper map I had to see if people lived a mile out or, you know, and I just hoped that I was accurate when I was checking. So the subcommittee had a discussion about, you know, what constitutes Newburgh, you know, is it the Sheehan Valley, is it the city limits, and settled on the recommendation that we have a uniform ma, uh, residential requirement for committees for membership, and that all committee members be residents of the city, um, except to reserve one seat on each committee for individuals who reside within the urban growth boundary. So, and I would invite the subcommittee to share their thoughts at this time.
I think that for me, it, this just helps standardize it, and we recognize, I think, that we provide services for uh, most all of our residents, but that there are some services that overlap into spaces outside of the city limits, and so this just helps um, get some of that input from people who live close but not inside city limits, um, but also kind of standardizing how many people um, from outside the city limits are on each one of those committees. So I just think it makes a lot more sense, it's a little more logical to do it this way.
Okay, and moving on. So item five, membership on committees' terms. So, membership is kind of in, but we're consistent in their inconsistency, let's put it that way. So membership is four years for, for, um, library, three years for all others. And then we had some that, when they started, they didn't establish membership terms, that's affordable housing. And then we sort of interpreted it over the years based on what we thought they meant when they started it. Again, I have this conversation every time we do recruitment, and so the recommendation of the subcommittee is to have standard terms of three years, and then to avoid, you know, um, not avoid, that's a bad word, let me think how to rephrase that. Um, some committee members love their committees, and they serve on them for a very long time, and that's grand. Except when you have perhaps new residents or people who suddenly decide they want to join uh, the ranks of volunteers and, and serve the public, and there's no space for them. So the subcommittee discussed, you know, in addition to the standard terms of three years, which would be a legislative change to adopt an administrative practice of having members reapply at the end of each term to be considered. That one sort of preserves some, the opportunity for institutional knowledge to carry over from committees, planning is a commission that really requires a lot of study and training. Um, and two, in case we don't have a big pool of candidates, I have had feast and famine here at the city. There have been years we have been flush with, um, applicants, and there have been years I've had to chase people down the street only literally once, um, to get them to volunteer. So this was the recommendation of the subcommittee, and I would invite them to share their thoughts with the council.
Well, I mean, I think on this one and, and others that you see, I mean, it's an idea to try to streamline, gets a little more consistency, which should make life easier, hopefully for staff and for recruitment and all of that, so I think that was, um, some of the, the areas we thought about.
Okay, um, this is one that was not in the analysis. So, uh, Rick had brought this up, and the subcommittee had discussed why not go ahead and make the student position voting numbers, uh, where allowed by law. Um, the reason I put that phrase in there is the budget committee, um, makeup is determined by state budget law. And so it's not something we can really effect, but, um, we can still have a student member on there. Um, so this was a recommendation of the subcommittee that would, when I'm untangling the, not the the skeins of the yarn that makes up the code, um, to bring it back before you for action. Um, this is one that we might as well do it at the same time, as long as we're doing that, so I, um, see if Rick and Denise and Stephanie have any thoughts to share.
I, I work with a lot of our, uh, students that, at the high school, and these kids, they do their homework, I mean, y'all met Colin, right? I trust him to make decisions, there's been kids in the past, all the kids in the past have just been, you know, incredible, did their homework, um, and I think, I think it's only fair to let them vote. Um, it's one thing to give someone the opportunity to give their opinion, and it's another to allow them to vote. Um, you're asking them to do the same work, they should get the same vote. That was pretty much my thinking, and plus this, they, they offer, you know, a lens that we don't have.
All right, is that, that's it, I take it? Any, any other questions or comments, folks? All right, well, there we go.
Hard work on this.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you. Good work.
We, we won't tell you how long the meeting was, no.
That's right, yeah.
Well, we were done in well under an hour, so.
But thank you, Sue, for, for organizing all of our.
You're welcome.
Comments, thanks very much. Uh, that made life a lot easier, so. All right, so as mentioned, we'll see one of them during the consent calendar, the business session tonight, so that one is on there. Um, and then the others will be back then, unless you all, if you all are okay, we'll ask, I guess, ask Dan to ask staff to pursue these, I guess, so.
Yes, probably October. Um, and just for the record, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councillor Martinez Plancarte has entered the meeting.
There is Jules, welcome back, Jules. All right, all right, um, Dan, are you ready for the city managers' report?
Um, yeah, I can be. I'm writing myself a note. Um, I've got a relatively short report, I hope. Um, just wanted to provide a little bit of, uh, maybe redundancy, that since you all were there for the budget committee uh, meeting, or sorry, most of you were there, sorry, Councillor Yarnell Holloman, I don't mean to rub it in, but, uh, I'll catch you up, uh, afterwards, but, um, the budget committee process for ARPA got started, and, you know, really, I think a very productive discussion, um, you know, really trying to hone in on uh, values and, and criteria for evaluating potential proposals and expenditures for the five-point-three million that we are slated to receive. We've received half of the money, uh, so far. Um, and we'll receive the next, uh, allocation in a year, and so, uh, looking forward to, um, we've got a, a draft survey that I need to finalize and get out to folks, uh, on that committee in between the meetings, but we've got another meeting on the fifteenth to talk in more detail. Um, and then very much looking forward to hearing also from the community, and so trying to think, as we do the survey for the committee, uh, about a survey for um, others as well, and had the opportunity to talk to the chamber of board of directors this afternoon, and mention the fact that we'd probably be back uh, soliciting some ideas and some, um, some, uh, potential, uh, proposals even, uh, maybe from their, uh, membership, and, and just trying to prime the pump for some communication with that group, um, and I'll do the same for other groups as well. Um, just want to thank Sue as we're kind of talking through the, uh, volunteers and, and some of the roles of boards and commissions. Uh, Sue and Zyra, uh, who has been kind of helping split her time between the municipal court and, and working with, uh, Sue and the recorder's function, uh, Sue and Zyra set up a, a volunteer recognition event that was held in Memorial Park on the eighteenth, and um, it was really actually kind of a nice opportunity to meet the students and to have that opportunity in person to, uh, you know, COVID safe, of course, uh, but to meet, uh, some of our volunteers and, and especially some of the new, uh, faces, uh, as you need to watch them, uh, interact with one another and kind of talk about some shared experiences and what they were looking forward to in that service to the community, so just, uh, thank you, Sue and Zyra for, for coordinating that. Um, speaking of the chamber, um, was able to, to meet face-to-face with, uh, Scott Parker, who's the new executive director at the, uh, Sheehan Valley Chamber. Um, he started last week. Um, on Thursday, he and I and, uh, Leslie Caldwell and Polly Peterson are going to meet for our second meeting of the stable table Newburgh version, and essentially trying to set up, uh, ongoing communication between our groups and really trying to think about, um, economic development-related and, and business support-related activities that we can uh, collectively participate in, and so a second meeting, I'm hoping that we'll have a chance, obviously, we'll welcome Scott, let's start to talk a little bit more in detail about what we might be able to work on together. Uh, one of the things, though, that we are nearing readiness to launch is something I've mentioned before here, which is Berg bucks. So this is the idea of this closed-loop gift card for Newburgh businesses. Um, Polly Peterson, uh, really is kind of the champion on this, but um, she has identified a, a vendor, and we're in the process of finalizing both the look of the, uh, card, which of course matters, but also the process and, and getting the payment set up so that the uh, Berg buck cards will be, uh, able to be distributed within the community, and, um, it's a closed-loop system so that the, uh, money will be, uh, I think it'll be one node, one point of contact to buy them for the, the initial, um, iteration and, and really focused on downtown businesses, mainly because of Polly's uh, kind of leadership on it, and also just trying to think about a pilot program, that kind of a small, uh, rollout and launch, and let Scott get his feet on, on, under him before we think entire chamber, um, but a test, uh, for, uh, the, the concept, uh, trying to get that out as soon as possible, and, uh, hopefully it'll be very successful, but a chance for folks to obviously, like, buy, uh, buy some money at a business and gift it to, uh, someone else, or, or buy a gift card that they hold on to for themselves and just don't have to carry cash, whatever it is, so. Again, uh, hopefully that'll be, uh, a nice addition to, you know, the community. We continue to have, uh, what I think some of the staffers are calling a revolving door of, uh, hiring and, uh, departures and all kinds of, uh, things. I think some related to COVID, some related to all kinds of other issues. Um, and so I was able to participate in the interviews for the bilingual communication, uh, the community engagement specialist, so that position. We had four candidates, um, I think all were, uh, were really strong, and so, uh, you know, at this point, it's up to, uh, Lacy DiGraff to hire for that position. So look forward to kind of seeing where she goes with that. Um, and I think that'll be a huge asset for, uh, Latinx outreach in particular, and, and obviously also just one of the key pieces was making sure that they can support all of the city's communication through, uh, experience and, and actually running and, uh, and kind of developing campaigns, public information campaigns and things like that, so. And it'll just augment what she's able to do for the community. Um, we're in the final interview process for our human resources manager, this is sort of the reorganization of administrative services, uh, into divisions, some of those, uh, we've got a finance manager who you met at the budget committee meeting, Katie Strode, and so we're in the process of finalizing, I believe, uh, near there on the HR manager, and then interview process is just kicking off this week for the IT manager, and so hopefully near, uh, hiring for both of those positions, and I believe have strong candidates on, on both. And then, um, we do have a departure, and I sent the email to the council that just publicly say, uh, get, Kezia Warner, the assistant city manager, is, is leaving us. Um, she's taken a position as a business services director for the city of Portland Fire and Rescue, and so her last day will be the sixteenth. Um, sad to see her go, and I definitely appreciate, it, it's been, uh, just about a year, but, uh, appreciate the contribution she was able to make in a short period of time for the city and kind of moving the, um, that transition forward and, and a lot of the other projects, uh, both in finance and, and kind of just across the city. Um, so we'll definitely miss her. Um, Mayor Rogers and I were able to tour the Worth Building, uh, at G F U, uh, and, you know, I guess a week or so ago, but, uh, just a really cool, uh, new building, it's the PT building. Um, and, you know, it's just, it's really neat to see something like that come in, come to fruition, you know, we walked it when it was just sticks, essentially, you know, it was just lumber. And to see it finished is, it's incredible space, and the enthusiasm for the, the staff that are working there is, is amazing, it's really infectious, and um, really gives you a sense for the, um, ability, I think, for the university to contribute in the health space, and, um, for that to really be part of the brand of, uh, our economic development and the education, um, opportunities that are going to spin out of that, and, and folks who I'm sure will want to stay in Newburgh and contribute to our community, so it's, it's super exciting to see something like that complete and have it, uh, both look so amazing, but also, you know, just that function to be in the community. And then lastly, as a parent, I will just wish those, uh, with school-aged children, uh, you know, happy, uh, starts in the school year, hopefully it's a safe and healthy uh, school year, um, you know, believe tomorrow, uh, at least for my world, it's tomorrow. And, uh, we're still putting together backpacks and all those fun things, but, uh, you know, hopefully it's a safe and healthy school year for everybody, and, and that, uh, I guess, just finish with welcome back to school for parents too, and, uh, if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
Questions, anybody? All right, seeing none, I think I will move on then to proclamation, because we've got a couple of moments here. Um, let's start with a proclamation regarding the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. Our lives and our worlds were forever changed on September eleventh, two thousand and one. Thousand of innocent men, women, and children lost their lives in attacks in New York City, Pentagon, and in Pennsylvania. The day would be defined as the worst attack on the American people in history. Now, as we near the twentieth anniversary of that fateful day, we remember the lives of those lost, their families, and the heroism of those who charged into the burning wreckage. The selflessness displayed by first responders and ordinary citizens on that September day will be forever remembered. For this is the true character of America. Today, remember the lives lost and the families left, the heroes and the outpouring of service that followed the devastation. September eleventh is a day to remember our common purpose and our common goodness on this twentieth anniversary and every anniversary forward. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed. And maybe just a, a brief moment of silence as the anniversary is but days away, um, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. All right, um, and another proclamation for, um, a, a month coming up here on the fifteenth of September. In honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, the city of Newburgh is pleased to celebrate the Hispanic and Latinx community throughout our city. National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated in the United States from September fifteen to October fifteen. The observance started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period. His Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the history, traditions, and culture of the Hispanic and Latinx residents in Newburgh. We admire the invaluable ways they contribute to our city by bringing Rick's diversity and growth to our community. We strive to continue to commemorate this month by recognizing and dedicating ourselves to working together to address the challenges that still face our Hispanic and Latinx population. Now therefore it is proclaimed. So thank you all. Those are the proclamations that I have. I don't know that there's much else. It's only 6:30. My word. All right. What about any council committee reports? Anything you've got to report out? On any other goings on that might be going on? All right. Well, you, you're going to have a little lunch or dinner break, I guess, before we start this up again at seven o'clock. So if you haven't eaten, you know, get out there, get something to eat, get prepared for the next part of the meeting. And we'll see you back here at seven. And Mike, I meant to say, I, we've been missing each other on the phone multiple times. I finally sent you an email today, so we'll, we'll try to connect. So thank you. Otherwise, unless anybody's got anything else, we'll see you back here at seven. Seven o'clock it is. Thank you. There's a session for September 2021. This meeting of
Is he delayed for you all too? Rick, I think you're having connection issues again. It also says you're muted, but you're not. So I don't know what that means. Council president.
Okay, I'm going to take over for him until he gets back. So let me look. Sue, do you want to do the rule call for us, please?
Yes, yeah. Council president. Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Cofield.
Present and accounted for.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plankerty.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. All right. The pledge
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Please, for those who might be just tuning in, dang it, I'm going to, I'm going to try stopping my video and see if that will help.
I don't think it's helping. Okay, that's not helping. So it'll be me again. Let's see. Let me pull up my agenda here. It looks like we've skipped a bunch of stuff. So can we have? I just want to make sure that I have everything here. Oh, we're going to go on to public comments. And my understanding is we have at least two public comments. Is that right, Sue?
Yes, and I'm trying to promote Jesse Cad to panelist. I think I've gotten him over safely. I'm not seeing the, the second requester, but I'll go ahead and put the clock up for Jesse.
Okay. Hi Jesse, you're on mute now, but go ahead. Sue's going to put the clock up for five minutes for you.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to address the city council. I was sort of riffing off of the mayor's letter that was sent to the school board. So I read the letter and I noticed that you, the letter was finished by saying, to thrive, Newburgh must be welcoming to all. I agree with this statement in principle. However, there is a hidden assumption in this statement as used in the letter that I'd like to point out. To be welcoming to all in the context of city business should mean ensuring that no one is being prevented from being able to come here, live and do business. It does not mean and cannot mean to agree with every person's personal opinions about matters that we differ on. But you and others on this council continue to conflate being welcoming with being affirming. These are not the same thing and a person or a city can be welcoming without affirming in areas of disagreement. Unless the true meaning of your final sentence was to thrive in the way we want. Newburgh must be welcoming to the kinds of people who will advance our agenda. Since this city government is ostensibly for all the people of Newburgh, it should, as the school board has wisely chosen to do, stay out of politically hot topics. It should not take sides on issues that large segments of this city disagree about. The current city board majority may be sympathetic to one or the other side depending on the issue. But to blatantly push one side's agenda will only result in backlash. The school board is trying to restore political neutrality to our classrooms, something greatly to be desired. And the city council should consider doing so themselves. I also noted in your letter that you say we should consider the hypothetical minority or woman owned business being repulsed by the school board's actions. Perhaps you should also consider the hypothetical conservative Christian, Muslim or Jewish resident or business owner's opinion of this city's recent official support for Pride Month. How is this welcoming to these people? Are they less deserving of being welcomed to Newburgh than others? If you truly wish to be welcoming to all, stop taking sides on these political and cultural issues. Stick to doing city business and stay out of divisive political and cultural issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jesse. And Sue, do we have the next person?
I'm not seeing them.
Okay. All right. We will move on then. I'm going to, it looks like Rick's connecting. Can you hear us, Rick?
I'm back, sort of. We'll see. I may have to, I'll just keep the video off for now, if that's all right.
Okay.
Oh, did we hear from Jesse Cad then from public comments?
Did? We did.
Okay, great. And was there a John, I think, as well, Sue? No?
No, and I was actually looking at the other day he signed up for, and it was a Tuesday. So I'm going to call him tomorrow and see if perhaps he was somehow trying to do court, which is on October 5th, but not October 4th. So.
Okay.
Been confused. I'm not sure.
All right.
On the attendee side, no.
Yep. Okay. Thanks very much. And we'll close public comments, I guess, if it's not already been closed. So there you go. And then have we gone to the consent calendar yet, council president? Okay, consent calendar. Do we, do we have a motion, folks?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
This is Denise. I'll second it. I don't know what's happening.
Counselor Bacon seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying I, no, raising your left hands and all say I. I, unanimous. Thank you all. All right. Let's see. All right. It looks like the next item on our, our agenda is item nine. This is an executive session. I will now read the announcement required to hold an executive session. After the announcements, this Zoom meeting will terminate and the council will enter into a separate Zoom meeting not open to the public. The council will now meet an executive session for the purpose of considering the dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192662B. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons will be allowed to attend the executive session. No decision will be in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, the council will return to open session to make any decisions arising from discussions in executive session. We will now terminate this public Zoom meeting and begin the executive session. All right. We will see you all in a minute or two.